Yes. I think it's, I think so. Okay. Oh, well. Right for the fast lady.
That are great.
This person just became my favorite person my whole life.
Oh, Kathy McPetrage.
Isn't that crazy?
I'm wondering if there's a reason like it's like.
She'll make us mad.
I don't know. That's what I'm wondering like this, is that the new guy's job? Yeah. Make the motions against who gets mad. It is cold. It is cold, man. No, I think I'll pass. They go past on the blanket. It is cold, man. If it didn't make me look like a sissy, I would probably have one.
Do it standing when you're here. Sorry.
Look at that.
You all ready?
Go for it.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August School Board meeting. Kind of feels like the first week of school, doesn't it?
Oh, it does.
Board, you've had the meeting agenda notes for tonight. Any changes? Dr. Rollins, any changes?
Mr. President, the agenda would stand as presented.
Can I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll second.
Is that Luttrell?
That was me, yes, sorry.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Luttrell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've also had the minutes from the prior month's meeting. Any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the time in our meeting for the patron comments. If anybody has any comments, just come to the podium, state your name, comment you have, and understand we can't address that tonight at the board meeting, but we will get back with you. No comments. Dr. Rollins?
Mr. President, would you leave this on the floor?
Sorry, that's my job.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I too want to welcome each of you this evening. It's great to see these blue coats, that's for sure. It always is. Guys, how'd y'all get way back there? Good to see ya. It's been a, it's been a great, really, first day of school, first few days of school. We're expecting, Mr. President, about 23,000 kids. I expect we'll grow in terms of comparison to last year's data, probably 300-plus kids this year. We have almost 2,000 teachers, almost another thousand individuals supporting us, and a great community that we feel their support every day. And we saw that just a few days ago as we opened school, as our Chamber of Commerce invited us back to school. It was a great event. And, Mr. President, why don't you take just a moment and remind the guests in the room that we made a very special presentation to the retiring board member. Talk with the group about that.
Yeah, we have to, I'm sure all of you know Kathy McPetrage spent 26 years on the board, was a super advocate for Springdale, Springdale Teachers and Springdale Kids. Kids primarily her main concern and her love and compassion for the kids. We were able to honor her, obviously for her service to Springdale, but also by naming the Elmdale, is that correct? Elmdale Media Center, the Kathy McPetrage Learning Center. So that was, what a great honor that was, just to be in her presence, actually, and to be able to give that award to her and just honor her. She's a very special lady to Springdale and I'm just so appreciative of her.
I just, and just hundreds of teachers talked with us about how special that was that the board had taken that action. Mr. President, you did a great job of leading us through all that. It's great. We have two relatively new board members, though, with us tonight. Nick, how's it feel? This is your, at least your second meeting, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
We're glad to have you. Good job. And Debbie, this is your first meeting, Debbie Creek. Well, ladies and gentlemen, students, welcome our new board members. We're looking forward to the best year ever in the history of our school system. We've got a great team together. We know we've got great kids, and I've talked about the great partnerships that are in place. And, Board, thank you for your constant support and leadership. It's just phenomenal. Dr. Smith, if you're ready, we'll begin our board agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Rollins, Board, and Ms. Creek, welcome. We have two outstanding agrib programs in our district, and we're going to have them come forward and share a little bit. I'm going to first have Harbor High School come forward, and then I'll have Springdale High School. I just want to let you know that the fair is coming up, though, and so next week they will be giving us a tour of what's happening at the Washington County Fair. We will be attending, I think Dr. Rollins' leadership members will be attending Monday at 1:30, so I just wanted you all to know that. So at this time, if I could have Ms. Priest come forward, and she'll be sharing about Harbor High School, and then following her will be Chad Burkett from Springdale High School.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I would like to just thank you guys for allowing us to build such a wonderful team of ag teachers at Harbor High School. I told Dr. Rollins earlier this evening that I'm starting year 14 at Harbor High School. And just to kind of explain how I feel about the team that I work with, we have a group message called Dream Team, and I do believe they are the dream team. So I'm not going to take all the credit of the work tonight, nor am I going to take all the time speaking. I am going to let my coworkers speak. My coworkers, who I also refer to as my two little brothers, that's what I feel like I'm working with most of the time. But we have fun. They are very hard workers, and they have, we have spent a lot of time this summer working with our students, a lot of student contact this summer. So I'm going to talk about, highlight two things that are nationally recognized for our program. We have Jenna Coats. Jenna, if you'll please stand. She was selected as one of 14 students in the state to attend what they started this year. It's called Senior Ag Tour. And on this tour, she saw a lot of industry around the state. And then because of her work on this, in this event, she was selected to serve this October as a national delegate. So she'll be representing the state of Arkansas and making decisions and voting on things that will impact the national organization. So we'll hear from her shortly. And then I also would like to recognize Justin Simas and Kelly Hosford. 188 students in the nation have the honor of being considered national finalists. Two students in the state of Arkansas are selected as national finalists, and they happen to both be from Harbor High School. Kelly Hosford is a national finalist. It'll be brought onstage at national convention, and they'll interview her and determine if she's the winner. A few years ago, we had a national winner in the food science category, Marissa Davis. Kelly's project is small animal production. She raises rabbits. And Justin's project is turf grass management. He works for his grandfather and father's sod-laying business. So I just wanted Jenna and Justin and Kelly just to speak to you just for a few minutes about their experiences from the student's side.
Hi, how you guys doing this afternoon? But I filled out a proficiency application, just speaking about the jobs that I've done and all the different work that I did throughout the years working for my grandfather. And it was actually a really big honor getting to do it and explain the work that his company, that he built over the last 25 years. So, I mean, it was a great experience, and I've got to win a lot of stuff throughout it, so it was an awesome time.
I also filled out a proficiency application for my rabbits. I do everything from breed to butcher, and I've had a lot of experiences with different rabbit breeders in the area and just the whole experience of being able to raise rabbits for everything.
Yeah, so with the help of my ag teachers, I got to apply for that ag tour. I was accepted, and then this summer I went over the state of Arkansas, saw all sorts of different industries that I didn't even know were in Arkansas. It was very informative and so much fun. And then the state of Arkansas chose me to be a national delegate, which I, of course, was like, oh, yes, please, accepted. And this October, I get to go for a week in Indianapolis and serve the state of Arkansas and vote on, you know, different topics, whatever they're going to be. I'm going to find out in a couple of weeks at our training session in, what, the 25th, I think is what it is. So I've found out what those are. Okay, now I'll introduce Mr. Roberts, and then Mr. Jones will follow.
Hey, guys. First of all, I just want to say thank you to you guys for all you do for our school district and to all the administrators in the room, several in here that I've had a chance to work with. I've been in the Springdale District for four years, and this is my second year as part of the Harbor. And last year, I was part of the Southwest Junior High Agriculture Program. I'm just going to introduce a couple of students and talk about their achievements and let them say a little bit, a few words to you guys. The first one's going to represent our career development events and leadership development events teams. We have a bunch of students competing on those teams throughout the year. Last year, our leadership development teams, we had five. There were individuals or teams that advanced to compete at state convention. And in our career development teams, which where they focus on career-specific skills and areas, we had seven teams compete at state and one team compete at nationals. The student that's going to talk to you a little about that today is Matthew Ball. I'll let him come up here in a second. And the other student I'm going to introduce to you is competing in a program called the World Food Prize. And last school year, as part of our agriculture class, she researched a third-world country and wrote a research paper about how she thought she could solve their hunger problem. So she went and competed at the Arkansas level for that. And two students from Arkansas were chosen to go this fall to Des Moines, Iowa, to the World Food Prize Institute. And so she's going to get an expense-paid trip in October to go up to Des Moines, and that's Hannah Callicott. So I'll just let these two come up here and tell you a little bit about their experiences.
Hello, my name is Matthew Ball. I was previously a part of Southwest Junior High, and then I graduated Harbor. I was on a team called Conducting Chapter Meeting. And a lot of that is like, I got to learn the rules of parliamentary law, and I got to work with teammates that helped me go through. And we went to the state convention, and that was a really cool experience for me, as well as I got to go to the, well, I didn't get to go, but I got to compete on the dairy team, which we had to identify different types of cheeses and defects in milk.
Hello, I wrote a research essay over Eritrea. It's a country in North Africa. In this essay, I talked about seawater hydroponics and how it can help solve the hunger crisis that is currently in the country. I won for the state of Arkansas, and me and another girl from Lamar, Arkansas, I think, are going to Iowa, and we'll get to meet with world leaders and international leaders as well, yeah. Thank you.
What was the name of the country again?
Eritrea.
Erythria?
Eri, yeah, Erythria.
Never heard of that one.
It's a really tiny country, right, right on the ocean.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll let Seth Jones come up and share some of his students.
I want to thank y'all for allowing us to be here. I'll turn it over very quickly to Keely Harrelson. She competed at the World Pork Expo back in June. I'll let her tell you about her experience and then finish up.
So I went to the World Pork Expo in Des Moines, Iowa, and showed pigs. And I chose to go up there because showing pigs, and pigs are part of my SAE project for my FFA program. And I'm planning on starting to breed pigs later in the spring. And so going up there was a great opportunity, because starting in January, we went down to Dover, Arkansas, to pick out the pig that I was going to show up there. And then February, we returned to pick it up, to take it up there. And then I went through feeding, and Mr. Jones helped me come out. He weighed the pigs, told me what I needed to do to help change the pig's feed and make her grow better. And then when we got up there, we won our class in our division, and then we were fourth overall pole and gill in the nation.
Wow, that's great, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'd like to point out one thing. All these young men and women here, they keep talking about SAEs and proficiencies. All of the students at Harbor, they fill out SAEs and proficiencies, and inside that are essays that they talk about these experiences that they do. And all of us as ag teachers during the summer go out and spend time with each and every one of these individuals. And we work on their SAE with it, so when they come back in the school year, they get to write these essays and submit them for college scholarships and different opportunities. And so that, that in turn is one of the best ways that we were able to put literacy in the ag room with these kids, while doing that in a way that they enjoy and doing something that they love while they do that. The last point, I would like to just thank the, not only the board, but all the administration here at Springdale Public Schools for their support for us. We show pigs and go to different things, all of us throughout the summer go to different contests. And I looked up in the stands, and Dr. Greep and Dr. Smith was up there back in June at a pig show at the Washington County Fair. And I just point that out because that's a, that's a tri-state show. And there was one group of administrators there, and that was from Springdale Public Schools. And I just appreciate that. I think that goes to show the support and the passion that you all have, not just for agrib, but for all the kids here at Springdale. So I want to thank y'all for that.
Hello, Board. I'm Chad Burkett. I have Greg Hernandez, Matthew Walker, and Ms. Pinckton. She's an ag teacher at Lakeside Junior High. Mr. Emerson, Ms. Creek, welcome. Rest of the board, appreciate y'all. I want you to know that every morning when I get up, I truly count it a blessing to be able to serve in Springdale. I mean, I don't take it lightly. I've worked in poultry industry, and it's been great to our state. But I truly feel blessed every day, and I want you to know that. Also, I don't want to, I don't want to take away what Harbor's achieved with their students is truly phenomenal. And I want you to, I want you to know that we really support their program. What they're doing is amazing. It really is. We've had a very busy summer as well. We keep a busy school year. You know, kids at Springdale look a little differently than they did several years ago. Just a few statistics, we only have four out of a little over 502 kids that live on farms at Springdale High School. However, what you would be surprised to know is we're a leader in agriculture, both in our state and nation. One of the coolest events that we've engaged in is we have a cultural barrier that disallows or doesn't allow some students to travel to overnight conventions. And so we work with the State Department, Mr. Backus. He's the program manager for agriculture. And they actually brought the first-ever leadership state convention to Springdale High School. And we hosted it at Springdale High School June 6th, 7th, and 8th. And so that's a first of its kind. I was very proud of our kids. We worked on a one-to-one basis with the state FFA officer team. That's something a lot of kids don't get to see. And they work with our students that are English-language learners, our students that come from impoverished backgrounds. And you would be surprised at the impact. And what was really cool, and I have some pictures, it just kind of sends chills down my spine, is many of our students could only attend if they could bring their young brothers and sisters. So we had four-year-olds, all the way up to senior high, 18-year-olds, working with this officer team. And I just thought to myself, this is what Springdale's about. Doesn't matter. We're breaking the boundaries of what leadership and involvement should look like. And it was really cool because we're in the courtyard, they had a closing ceremony, and all the kids got to put their fingerprint on this plaque that it was their promise and their pledge to, you know, do whatever they pledged. The leadership piece was, you know, here's what I'm going to strive to do better. Here's what I'm not doing good at. You know, how can I improve my community? And to see these little fingerprints I got in my classroom, you know, some little thumbprints of these kids that have come up, it was really cool. I just had to share that, but I really enjoyed that. Another cool piece, so we don't have kids that live on farms, but we have 143 fair projects that we're entering Saturday and Monday. I'm very proud of that. So if you look at, a little over one-fourth of our kids are actively engaged in demonstrating something that they constructed with their hands, or animals, or projects they worked on in the shop at the county fair. And, you know, I feel it's very important that we incorporate agriculture, even though it may be urban agriculture, into the lives of all children. Additionally, Ms. Pinckton and I, I want to really, you know, give her hands for, you know, brag on her for engaging students at the junior high level. She, she receives some technology called Shopbot. And so Supervised Agricultural Experience was designed for students to work on agricultural experience outside of the classroom. In years past, it's been farming, you know, animals, things of that nature, vegetable gardening. With kids living in apartments, we got a shift this past year to school-based enterprise. And so she engaged students in Shopbot and other school-based enterprises where they produce products. It's their supervised agricultural experience, but it's school-based enterprise. So they sell these, it funds the program, they have an agricultural project. And so with that, she and I, we wrote a grant, Perkins Grant, we're currently in approval process, so we'll extend that to the high school, where we'll have Shopbot, and we'll extend, so they can start in the ninth, eighth, ninth grade. And so essentially, eighth through 12th grade, they can be engaged in agricultural pursuits, extending from Lakeside Junior High, and we hope to implant that also at George Junior High. So on the east side of town, they can transfer Springdale High School and continue that on and build proficiency awards, much like these young people received. Couple other cool things, we've worked with Arkansas Game and Fish Commission. And I don't want to let out a huge surprise, and I'm probably speaking out of turn because I haven't gotten approval for a few things, but we're working on a community-wide event that's sponsored by the East Program, Agriculture, Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, and elementaries, where it won't only engage high school kids or Springdale kids, it'll engage the entire community of Springdale at an event we're playing in the spring. I don't want to let that out, but it's going to be a really cool event. We're in the playing stages, and I'm going to submit that proposal to Dr. Rollins and the leadership team. But I want to tell you, there's, we have a really cool opportunity, and I'm really excited about getting the people of Springdale engaged. I brought a couple of kids here today. Board, I can't ever take away from the work that all programs at Springdale Public Schools do, the hard work, working with children, providing opportunities. And I want you to know that we work every day, both, you know, agriculture, sports. We can share story after story. But I brought a few kids that would not be classified as typical agriculture kids, and I just wanted to share their story with you a few moments, and then we'll have a few closing remarks. And I just want you to know, I appreciate you folks. Thank you so much. This is Greg Hernandez.
Over the past summer, I've been helping out at Star Mechanical Supply up in North Springdale. And the only reason I got my internship there was because Mr. Burkett here, he took me to, like, he helped, he told me that he had an opportunity that he wanted me to help at his house. So I helped him build his shop out behind his, on his land somewhere. I can't exactly remember where, but behind his house. And when I was helping there, he introduced me to his brother, who I didn't know at the time, was working at Star Mechanical. And he was impressed by how well I worked and how I didn't stop, to where he gave me my first internship in early January to go and help with a Fort Smith store move. It's where we went, and all the materials from one store, we moved to a bigger location to where it all just kind of fit better, since the old location was pretty worn down and used. Then after that, he told me that he's willing to let me have a summer job there if I prove my worth. And I accepted it, and I took him up on his offer. And when I actually got there, he let me work the entire summer. He paid me well, and the only reason I got that was because Mr. Burkett here will show me and let me meet his brother and his family. And they're all very kind people. One thing, I don't really know why he, I don't know how to explain it, but he's kind of like a friend to me. But back when I was about 13, or 12, 13, or 14, my brother's about 10 months older than me. But my mom, she had a stroke, to where me and my brother had to take care of her. And ever since then, we've just been taking care of her throughout our high school career. And I've even had a job for a while now, and even the summer internship to where it gave me better opportunities. And now, since I joined the FFA, it kind of showed some sort of like brotherhood or like some camaraderie, it showed that. And so then I decided, since my brother, he went and he talked with some of the recruiters, and he decided that he's going to join the Marines. And I took him, since, like, he didn't have a license, so I took my older brother to go to one of PTs. And the recruiter there just showed me all the opportunities that I could have, since I already took my ASVAB. And so I decided to join also, to where me and my brother, he's leaving September 24th, and I'm leaving June 10th for boot camp. And the only way that I really got to that point, or to this point now, is because of all the things that the FFA has shown me, like, hard work and dedication and like, just how to complete and never leave anything undone.
Just want to share that, Board. I didn't, I didn't want him to plug me because it's not about me. But I just want you to understand that having programs for a variety of kids provides opportunities. And Greg's a success story, in my opinion. I'm very proud of him, you know? And I know there's dozens of teachers from this district that do the same thing. Matthew, he has a very similar story. For sake of time, I'll let him visit with you. But Matthew, share a little bit about your story, how you got all the FFA.
Hello, I'm Matthew. I moved here last year for my junior year from Georgia, Valdosta. And when I moved here, my parents were going through a divorce. And basically, one lives on one side of the country, the other one lives on the other side. So I was looking for like a figure to look up to and to guide me, and just life skills, and Burkett really was there for me. And that's one thing I really learned from FFA, yeah.
Well, the main thing is he came in school two weeks late. He's been to numerous states over the past several years. And, you know, providing a place for him to fit in. So less than a year ago, he had virtually never heard of the FFA. And today, he's here visiting with you, never spoken public before. And I just want to showcase these students because, you know, sometimes the victories that we win may seem small to some, but, you know, there's no child in this district. And one of the pillars this district's built upon is serving all children. I just want to share that with you. One last thing I'm very proud of, good job, Matthew. Thank you, Greg. And please don't take that as any attributes to me. I don't want to take any credit for that. I truly feel blessed and fortunate to help serve these kids. But I just want you to know, I don't do anything special. I'm far from perfect, very imperfect, actually, and I make a lot of mistakes. But we provide a place for kids to come. One other thing that Ms. Pinckton and I and our team's proud of is we partner with Northwest Arkansas Community College. And we are offering certifications now in agriculture. So every kid that comes out of our shop class could gain up to four certifications, starting with OSHA-10 enters shop. You know, Crossland was here, I was visiting Ms. Pinalto earlier. Various other industry partners in our community are paying our students a premium for gaining these certifications. And in addition to that, we also qualify for a grant, and I'm so excited. Mr. Bradshaw, you know, all the industry partners, Ms. Pinckton's husband, he worked, he actually helped us build that partnership, Northwest Arkansas Sheet Metal. Folks, there's going to be some really exciting things come out of our mechanics programs. Dr. Rollins, Board, thank you. And I don't want to take away, I'd like to give all these students, particularly Harbor, on all their certifications, their achievements, representing our community. And I'm very proud of these young men for having an opportunity to better their lives. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all so much.
I think I'm shrinking. I don't know. I don't know if this is higher or I'm shrinking, but...
Something's not right.
Something is definitely, here, okay. Is this better, you know? Huh? I don't know. But anyway, Board, good evening, Dr. Rollins. As you know, one of the things I always love to do, I get to bring forward outstanding teachers. And this one, Ms. Shaw, would you come on? I have watched this one, I believe, since she was an intern. And she was one of those rock stars even as an intern. And man, what this young woman can do today, and the way she teaches our kids, it is amazing. And if you remember last month, I brought Sandy, Amy Sandy, from Sonora Elementary before you, because she had won the Presidential Academic, I'll Never Get It All Right. But there was an award that she won. Well, Anna is one of our state finalists for the same award. So, Anna, would you explain to them how you got to where you are? Okay.
Thank you very much for that introduction. That was very sweet. I'm really blessed to be here and to be surrounded by such a wonderful family that is Springdale. And everyone has supported me and helped me get to where I have gotten so far. So, thank you for that. I was nominated by Ms. Christy Schogger, a teacher on special assignment, last year for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. And I'm obviously in the math portion, because I'm a math teacher at J.O. Kelly Middle School. I was originally at Jones Elementary for four years, and now I've been teaching, this is my third year at J.O. Kelly. So, both schools have done a wonderful job, their administration and teachers, in supporting me and teaching me more than I ever could have learned in the college classroom. So, I'm truly a product of Springdale Schools and administration. But like I said, Christy nominated me, and I completed my application in May of this year. And it was compiled of recommendations, and resume, and essay questions, and a video portion of my students in my classroom and myself. And then I was notified in July that I was a finalist. Up to three state finalists are selected, and then there will be one national recognized person from Arkansas in math, and then one in science. And I am just waiting to hear. So, I'm very blessed and excited just to be a finalist. And we will just kind of wait and see where it goes from there. If I am selected as a national winner, then I will spend time in Washington DC at the White House for professional development and recognition there. So, it's exciting.
How many of you have heard that we're going to have a rally on the 22nd? Has anyone heard that?
I heard that.
Have you heard that? Okay, good, at least one person has. But on August 22nd, at Arvest Ballpark, from 5:00 PM to 6:15, we are going to have a rally. And you are so special. In just a moment, I am going to give you the very first wristbands that anyone has had so far. You get to have yours early. If you need additional ones to bring to your family, if you just let me know, I'll be happy to get more for you. But on that night, we are going to have, there are more than 40 booths that night that represent, not vendors or anyone, but just folks who partner with us. There will be the Arkansas Coalition of Marshallese. We've got folks there, Papa Rap will be there. We've got all kinds of people that are coming there, that have been supportive of us. And a few months ago, when Dr. Rollins mentioned this, we were trying to think of, how can we really celebrate who we are, and what we do, and how great our kids are? Well, wait, there's more. At the, from 5:00 PM until 6:15, we will also have performances. And I have to acknowledge, Kelly Bortz over there is the one who's putting together our agenda. But we will have cheerleaders there, middle school, junior high, and high school. Both high school bands will perform. We will have a choir made up of all, of representatives from all of our elementary schools. It will be an exciting, jam-packed evening. And in addition, this wristband right here, not only will it get you in the door for the rally, but you can stay to watch the naturals play ball that night. First pitch is at 7:05, and we'll be finished with our activities by 6:15. Give you plenty of time to go get you a hot dog, and soft drink, and enjoy that evening at the ballpark. But I do have to tell you this, I have a partner who's been working with, Joe, Joe Rollins back there. Joe and I have been working on this together. And in addition to that, there's about 40 or 50 volunteers from this school district who have done all kinds of work. I told you, Kelly has been working with some volunteers to put together all the performances. We have folks who put together the choir. We have people who are putting together all the booths. And these people have worked tirelessly. And we have done every meeting we have had, except for the very first one, by Zoom, which is an audio and video conference. So, these folks, the fact that we were opening school, they just said, no, this is important. We're going to do this. So, I can't give them enough accolades, but I hope to see all of you there. So, let me give you all your wristbands.
Do you have any questions about the rally?
Will Ms. Bortz perform at the rally, or is she just helping put it?
I don't know. I thought she was going to do some gymnastics.
I thought she might.
We may have a special guest. He may throw out the first pitch or not, right, Dr. Rollins?
Well, I think we'll have a special guest, for sure.
Well, that is all I have to say. So, I kind of want to lay a knee, Dr. Rollins.
That's okay, it's taken your time, that's good.
Anything else?
So, this is part of the Forward Arkansas?
No, actually, that was in his print. Forward Arkansas will have a booth there, but it really, Forward Arkansas is not sponsoring that. They are thrilled that we are doing this, because working for the Forward community who is doing anything like this. Now, if I give you a wristband, I want to see all of you there.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially if somebody's going to throw out the first pitch.
Yeah.
Do that, it's a special guest. Could be a surprise.
She can do it. Thank you, Kathy.
If y'all want, if you want any more from your family?
Let me know.
Joe, thank you as well. We appreciate y'all's work. I know you've had a great committee working on this for some time.
Oh, we have.
They're great folks.
Good deal. Thank you both. Okay. Kathy, how are you? Let me introduce you before you get carried away.
Okay.
She's just on the go all the time, as you can see. This is one of the great members of our team. I just, we have a great nursing staff. Kathy Laundre's our nursing coordinator. When we look at the scope of her work, I know you'll appreciate all over again what she and her nurses and the entire staff do. So, welcome, Kathy, we're glad to have you.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, School Board, Dr. Rollins, Dr. Cleveland, and Joe Rollins for all the support I get from everybody, helping me do my job. As you see, I have a report of our mandated programs we've done for the 2017, 2018 school year. So, we do vision screens on all our students and the grades that are listed, and hearing screens. And we also by law have to do scoliosis screening of our students. And we do that mainly in our junior high and middle school students. So, looking at the vision screening, you'll notice that we screen about 12,000 students. And we have to go back and re-screen some of these children, just to be sure if they lost glasses, to see if they've passed. And then we go ahead and refer our kids on to local physicians in our area, optometrists. Then we have ones that need glasses, we get glasses for these kids, and sometimes they're not able to afford these glasses. We pay for this out of our social services funds. And this is donated to us through different benefactors throughout the school year. A lot of it comes from our, the Christmas card fund through the newspaper, which is helpful for us. We gave over 7,000 flu vaccines last year, and our flu clinics will be coming up again this year in October. The Health Department's already contacted me and wanted us to go ahead and get our dates scheduled and everything set. So, that's already taken care of and ready to go. The Ronald McDonald House Charities Dental Van visits our school district. And we see not every school each year, because of, we have 11 schools that we're seeing, but we're not able to see them each year because of so many kids that we are serving during that time. Any child who has a dental problem, if they've not been to a dentist in the past year, they're able to access the van. So, we see kids all the way from pre-K up through seniors in high school, which is very helpful for these children. We get children that come from all over the world, maybe have never been to the dentist. So, it's very important for them to be seen, so they're not in pain, so they're able to continue to learn. Let's see. Oh, our Heart Saver classes, we have CPR classes, and we have about 910 employees that are certified as CPR, AED, and First Aid. And that includes our cafeteria managers, I just finished a class for them early in August. Our bus drivers, our unlicensed assistant personnel on the buses for our special needs students, coaches, classified and certified staff. So, I run two classes every month during the school year, and this certification is good for two years. So, therefore, they're only gone one day out of every two years to take a class. We also started our Stop the Bleed training last year. So, you'll be glad to know, we have 170 staff members trained in tourniquet and stop bleeding control. We have emergency backpacks handed out in all our buildings, and they're available for any emergency at this time. So, when they go on a field trip, the teacher's been trained, I expect them to take the backpack with them, because they know what to do in case there is an emergency. You see our list of partnerships. Our most, probably our best partnership was with the U of A, with the Eleanor Mann School of Nursing. We have nursing students who come for their six-week rotation, who work with my nurses. And they are graduating, the first group will graduate in December. So, we let them start running the health room, so my nurse can do other things. And they have done a fabulous job. Some of them are going to go out and do some dental screenings. We're getting ready to start some BMI testing, they're going to help us with that. So, we're going to train them, we're getting ready to do a study at one of our elementary schools. So, they're going to assist with that, too. Also, I wanted you to see our school nurse survey. This is required across the state, and every school district has to participate in this. So, this is a survey that we, my nurses keep track of all their statistics, what goes on in their building. And then I compile all the information, send it off to the state. So, just for your own information, just to see how many allergies that we have, how many blood sugars that we test, number of students who have asthma, number of students who have life-threatening allergies. It's just interesting to see what our numbers run from year to year. But the most interesting number is the number of students that are sent back to class. We had 59,950 students that maybe came through our health room. We were able to take care of them, take care of their problems, and send them on back to class. They did not spend time being gone, having a day missed from school. They were able to stay in the classroom to continue to learn. So, it's really important, I thank you again, Dr. Rollins, and his support of having a nurse in every building, two nurses at Harbor High and Springdale High School. And then we also help with the staff-related services. I partner with Mary Miller and coordinate school health. My nurses spend time helping with diet education, maybe a healthy lifestyle for our teachers, blood pressure checks. We do a weight loss program in January, just to keep the teachers motivated. Some of them want assistance with these type of things. We also work with First Aid on our teachers, too, that maybe have an injury, and we're able to help take care of them at school. We also encourage them, part of their exit plan, to have education for our teachers. So, we'll maybe send out a monthly email. Did you know you need to drink 10 glasses of water a day? Did you know you need to get more exercise and walk around the track, this type of thing? So, thank you so much for your support. Are there any questions? Yes.
How many nurses do we have on staff?
Right now, we're up to 35. I was able to hire an assistant this year, thanks to Dr. Rollins and Dr. Cleveland, so that helps me. I have one nurse who's doing a one-on-one with a student this year, so that increased my numbers.
Okay, all right. And how many at each high school? How many nurses?
We have two nurses at Springdale High and two nurses at Harbor High.
Okay.
Currently.
Kathy, I'm so proud of you and the work of our entire team. Our coordinated school health program, I think, is the very best in the state, and has been for years. It's just marvelous what you do for our kids and our families. So, thank you very much. I know you've got a member of your team here, do you want to introduce her?
Yes.
I know you're glad to have her with you.
Yes, Beverly is with me, and she has been busy since before school started, handing out school supplies. We had Phil the Bus came to our office, and we had probably 45 boxes full of school supplies. And so, she has been busy a little bit, and if we need extra clothing, shoes, whatever, for our students, we call Beverly, and she's got to take the Walmart cart and go shopping.
So, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the approval meeting for Parson Hills.
Yes.
And your passion for what you do, and obviously, the results show, it's extraordinary. It's just a great program.
It is.
It's very important to get the kids back in the classroom. You're looking at that lens as well, obviously, you care for the kids and the staff, but getting them back in the classroom is really important.
It is. It shows the statistics by having a nurse there, it keeps those kids from going home for every little thing, keeps the parents at work, so they're not losing their jobs, and keeps our kids learning.
But the track record that you built here, they really couldn't say no if you asked them to do it for Parson Hills. That's what I enjoyed most.
Yes.
When I asked them that question, what would make you say no? And they, they didn't have an answer, and I said, well, then you can.
That's right.
That's what I enjoyed the most.
Yes, and we're excited about when that clinic opens. I know Maria is, too. So, anyway, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good evening. In your packet, you'll see the list of students who want to transfer this month. There are 16 students who want to come into the district, and one student that wants to leave the district. And that student is a senior who has been at West Fork for his whole school career, and wants to stay there for his senior year. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve these out-of-district transfers.
I'll make a motion that we approve the out-of-district transfers.
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Luttrell, and a second, Mr. Ross, to approve the out-of-district transfers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you.
Members of the audience, I'll just share this information with you. Today was a very special day for our team. We meet three times a year with our school board to just talk about the events of the day, have planning initiatives, et cetera. We don't take action on items of special interest, but we really study it and make sure that we're all on the same page, don't we? So, Board, thank you for a great day. Any comments you might have about the agenda today?
I just appreciate all the principals that came. And I mean, the first week of school is a tough time, and so, to come and meet with us is just greatly appreciated. And I think we all learned a lot, and have a lot to go, and I think that, thank you very much.
That means a lot. It sure does. Okay. We talked a little bit throughout the day. Even in my introductory remarks, I talked about our staff, our returning staff. You know that we have almost 2,000 teachers. We have 150 new teachers that have joined us. And I told them, as we brought them on board, that they were joining, from my point of view, the finest educational team in our state. And then I went on to say to our teachers, as they had returned, that we had 150 new teachers, and that they would make us better, and better, and better, and they will. They're a wonderful addition to our team. We, as you know, have almost 1,000 support personnel. We have support personnel in the audience tonight who will be introduced. But you can imagine what Mr. Wyatt and his team have done in terms of getting all our schools ready. And I think they are ready. I'm really pleased about the work that our maintenance team has done. If you're in our buildings, they're spick and span, our custodians have just done a beautiful job. It's a great place for our teachers to return to. We're expecting about 300-plus new kids, and it'll be interesting. It could be more than that, by a significant number. So, we'll see. be interesting. It could be more than that, by a significant number. So we'll see how it works out, but we're anticipating about 300 new students, and we'll count tomorrow and tomorrow and tomorrow, and we'll have a better handle toward the end of the week. But as we look at our pre-K program, it would not surprise me at all to see about 1,500 three- and four-year-olds in our pre-K program, about 23,000-plus kids then in our kindergarten through 12th grade or pre-K through 12th grade. So a lot of opportunity, Debbie, any way you look at it. We're just expecting the best school year of the history of the district, and thanks to each of you for your help and support every step of the way. And I know our teachers and our principals feel it, just like our central office team. So, Mr. President, any questions about anything at all? Thank you all for a great day. We enjoyed it. Dr. Cleveland?
Usually it's dark by the time I get to get in. I'm trying, I'm trying. Hey, I'll tell you what, it's always, always a good day when you can have a work session and then follow with a board meeting. It really is a good day. It's good to be with all of you. First item on our agenda this evening is the acquisition of 53, or 56.34 acres, I believe, out in Sonora. The board's been well communicated with through Dr. Rollins in regard to the acreage. 22 acres is directly, or 22 acres is directly behind Sonora Middle, and then a further track of 35 on further. My understanding is the board may be ready to purchase this property. There is a resolution, I believe, Mr. Owenby, that you have, or maybe Ms. Emerson?
I'd like to make a motion to purchase approximately 56.43 acres at Sonora and Highway 412 East for future school-related purposes.
Second?
We have a motion from Mr. Emerson and a second from Mr. Boston to purchase this Sonora property, approximately 56.43 acres. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Rollins, for that opportunity.
Next item would be recommend, pose schedule for school board lunches. I think you have that in your board packet already. If there are any dates that are a difficult date for you, Dr. Rollins is certainly willing to relook at that on his calendar. Do you have that?
Do we have a hard copy of it somewhere?
It should be in your agenda.
Page 43 of your agenda.
Yes.
Page 43?
Yes. If you don't have one, I'll be happy to get you one. Okay? So, in fact, you can have mine.
Can you just email us each?
I sure can.
One of those that's standalone?
Well, I have one. Yeah, here it is.
I've got to put those in my phone right now, or it won't happen.
I just have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
The December 5th, Wednesday.
Okay.
Don Housen is the day we went to Little Rock.
Okay. Dr. Rollins?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
December 5th?
It's the Little Rock, it's the state's.
Yeah, that's State School Board, and we'll need to relook at that date.
Okay.
Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Which one is that, Michelle?
December 5th.
Ms. Cynthia, would you mind to take note of that particular date, and we'll find another date?
December 5th. We'll need to reschedule that.
We'll do like a lunch.
You know, that's not a bad idea. Dr. Rollins has talked about mixing these kinds of things up to have a breakfast or a lunch, or...
Breakfast might be a good idea.
We could do that, too. Sure. Certainly options. He's talked about mixing it up in the past, so we may have that opportunity to.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Or maybe earlier in the week.
Sure. I think that's a good call. Thank you. Thank you for catching that. Okay. Next, I'm supposed to provide you an update on new administrative personnel. I also plan to give you a little information about overall hiring to date. I'd really like to take this opportunity, informally and in this public setting, introduce our new associate superintendent and invite her to the mic, Dr. Mars.
She actually deserved a standing ovation.
Caught her off guard.
Wow, thank you. I wasn't expecting that. I just will have to say that I'm very honored to be assuming this position. I know I have some very big shoes to fill. Dr. Slocum did an amazing job, but she's also done a great job in helping me transition into this job. I appreciate Dr. Rollins' faith in me and helping us move forward. I will say one of the things that I know I shared with you today, but working with the administrators that we have in our district makes this job very easy, and as you can see through their passion for what they're doing, it just gets easier and easier. I would also say that I'm very thankful that I get to work with, of course, very closely with Dr. Rollins, but Dr. Cleveland and Dr. Morlich, they have been great supporters. And of course, Ms. Clay always keeps me very focused on what I need to be doing, too, so that's been great. And I can't not throw in Dr. or Mr. Hayes, but it's been great. But again, it's something to say that, you know, Springdale leads the way in everything that they do. It's evident in meeting with other people across the straight state. When we were at the AAEA conference, it's amazing, all the people that come up and are just blown away by the things we're doing in Springdale. And so, again, I'm very thankful for this opportunity, and I appreciate yours coming forward. So, thank you very much.
You can say a lot of things about Dr. Smith, but one that comes to my mind most of the time is she's just a class act, and she's a great example of what Springdale is, and so I'm thankful to work with her every day. Very smart. I have to really run to catch up with her most of the time, as smart as she is. Other district-level positions, of course, you've, you know, Joe Rollins has moved into a director role of support services. Dr. Brackett has also been introduced and is working in the role of student support. Bobby Cole, much the same. In fact, I keep getting great accolades about Bobby Cole and his efforts, especially with East School. Another one that we really haven't brought in front of you, but is a significant change, is Dr. Shawna Lyons. Dr. Shawna Lyons, why don't you stand up? And if you want to come to the mic, you certainly can, but she's transitioned from two schools. She's gone from Sonora Middle as principal to Archer as principal, and now she's going to run district-wide grant program, which is very important. Would you like to say anything to them about?
In other words, you're going to say something about?
Yes, I'm so excited because I had something ready. Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland and Board. Yeah, some of you have asked what I'm doing, and I'm now the grant coordinator for Springdale Public Schools, which is exciting. I think, I was sharing with a couple of you at the breakfast the other day, this is the first time in 15 years I haven't been an administrator opening a building for new staff, so I didn't have to think of a staff theme or come up with an agenda. I just got to kind of be and do, which has been fun. And one of the things I always said is when I moved to the district-level position, and I told Dr. Cleveland this, I'll accept the position, but I'm not going to lose touch of being with students. I don't want to be in an office all day, I've got to be with students. So yesterday and today, do you want to share with them just the first picture? I went back, I've been a principal in preschool all the way to 12th grade, so went back to my roots, and this is kindergarten lunch at Jones Elementary School. I helped kindergartners learn how to open their milk, and as you can see, I've lost my practice, I've lost my touch. They said, no, we can do it, we can do it. And then I came back, and I was like, oh, no, oh, no. And so I showed them how to do it, and then I went back today to help with lunch, and so here's, here's the product of that. So I'm thinking maybe a summer grant on working how to open milks might be a good thing. And then when we got done with this demonstration today, they were asking me how to open their mustard and their ketchup, and I thought, well, what in the world? I'll go ahead and show you. And I was showing them how to tear it, but I thought, you know, we're having pizza and salad and corn, so I can't imagine. And then here's what I got when I came back. We put it on the pizza. So it's been really fun to be in schools the past two days and just remember what we're doing and why we're doing this work. I'm excited about writing the grants. I don't have a vision for you yet. You know, I always have a vision. I have a meeting with Dr. Smith next week, so I'm sure we'll have a vision for you, and it'll be something about supporting all staff and students so that we can create readers and writers and mathematicians, yeah. So far, we've worked on the process to allow to, to align to the new board policy on crowdfunding, and so as you know, there's a process for grant applications and grant approvals, and then, so we've, we've worked on that process, and we've also worked on a process of tracking grants throughout the building and throughout the district, so we know exactly how much we're bringing in, in our, in our grants. And so I started the 1st of July, and already we've brought in four grants, and those are 21st CCLC grants, so that's 150,000 the first year, and the total of the five years can be up to 660,000. And that's back to Springdale High School, which had it previously, Helen Tyson Middle School, which had it previously, Sonora Middle School, which had it even before we opened Sonora Middle School, and now we're adding Archer Learning Center. And so that's very exciting. It's the first time, I think, that Archer's had the 21st CCLC grant, and talking to Lori Lamb, we're the first singleton ALE in the state to have an after-school program grant, so it'll be for 8th grade up to 12th grade. So already doing some work. So if you have any questions, my email's the same, so just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
She's the only person I know that would accept a part-time position and work full-time. So we're happy that she's, happy that she's here doing that. We also have Ms. Kelsey Ursery. I don't know if I saw Kelsey. There she is. How could I miss her? Kelsey, I didn't mean it that way. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry I missed you. She, she's going to have a baby, obviously, and she's pretty close, but Kelsey's worked her way, she's been excellent in our building. I believe you started at, is it Sonora Middle? Is that where you started?
Joe Kelly.
Joe Kelly, that's Sonora, then gone to Archer, and now she's worked her way up into the district-level special ed LEA. I am so sorry, I didn't mean it that way. I'm going to get in big trouble for that. So, anyway, we're very pleased to have her, and she's going to do wonderful work. She took Ms. Petra Nelson's place, large shoes to fill. Ms. Petra Nelson had been at the state as a, as a Department of Ed Director and Special Ed, but Kelsey is, is very ready to go, and she's very qualified. Is there anything? Did I do it again?
Just let her sit in.
I'm going to stop, Ms. Ursery, okay? I'm going to stop. Thank you very much for being here. Just not doing very well. I'm just having trouble. Let's see if I can mess anything else up. Okay, we have Dr. Davis and Ms. Nicole Davis at Archer. We've recognized Dr. Davis previously as the new principal at Archer, and he's, he's done a good job already. Ms. Nicole, she's come by way of Harbor through Oklahoma for about 10 minutes, and then came back, that's about true, about 10 minutes, and came back to us to work as assistant principal. And I believe at the end of day two, she's still working at Archer. Is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent. So we're really glad, glad she elected to stay with us. At Central Junior, I will just go alphabetically. We have someone who is not new to the district, but certainly new to the middle school and junior high rankings, and that is Ms. Chrissy Norwood. And so we're thankful she's moved from Jones over to Central Junior High. It's quite an interesting leap to go from Jones to Central, but she's done it and done it well. Dr. Rollins helped orchestrate that move, and I believe she's happy, from talking to her, from talking to her earlier. Of course, we've recognized Dr. Lofton. Another new face to you that you may not know at George Junior High is Josh Jenkins. Josh, Josh has been working at Joe Kelly. He's done some great work. You've been here how long?
10 years at Joe Kelly.
Okay. One of his claims to fame is he got a $10,000 makeover a few years ago from Sam's Furniture. So he's, he's done that, and partly because of his heart and who he is and his whole family's heart. Would you like to introduce who's here with you?
Absolutely. My beautiful wife, Katie Jenkins, she's the school counselor at Shaw Elementary. I'm a little biased, but best school counselor in the state of Arkansas. And then my oldest daughter, Trinity, she's a sixth grader, starting, keeping the Kelly Night tradition strong, going over to Joe Kelly this year. Then my next whole list is Gracie. She's going to be a fourth grader at Shaw. Levi on the end is going to be a third grader, or is a third grader, we started now, is a third grader. And then little Amelia is a first grader.
So we look forward to seeing Josh grow and develop and enjoy George Junior High. We've recognized, I believe, Mr. Curtis Gladden. I saw Curtis. Curtis is, he's transitioned from Springdale High over to Harbor. He lives over that direction, and he's going to do an excellent job at Harbor, and so we're glad he's there. Dr. Paul Greep, you heard from today. I believe the jury has deliberated and has come out and believes that he's done a really good job at Harbor for two days. So there are 176 more days on our schedule that he's got to perform as well as he's done the last two, so we're pleased that he's there. We have Mr. Ben Thompson. I saw Ben. Ben graduated from elementary school last week, and he's now the middle school principal, our assistant principal over at Hellstone. I told him I was going to do that, didn't I? I did. Now, to be real fair, he along with Allison Byford, Dr. Byford is at Hellstone, and so we're, we're very pleased and believe that, that building has actually gotten stronger since Dr. Lofton left.
He's out.
Well, as long as I messed up, you know, I, you know, I messed up with Ms. Ursery, and so the rest of it's just downhill. But no, we're very pleased with, with Dr. Lofton. He's done an excellent job so far at Central, and we only believe great things will be ahead of him, certainly. But Jake Beers, Jake? Dr. Rollins has an amazing story about Jake. He's told it a time or two. I'll let him tell it if he'd like to, but...
I'll save that.
Save the story. Jake is, Jake's been one of our instructional specialists at the district level. He has a great skill in science and in GQ. Is that it? Is that the... Jake is excellent, and he's going to be the new, in fact, is the new assistant principal at Jones, and we expect wonderful things from you, Jake, and thank you for your, your service and staying with us.
Glad to be, glad to take Chrissy's shoes.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Kelly, did I see Ms. Kelly? Ms. Kelly was at Central as assistant principal. She's now at SOI. One of her claims to fame is being a great organizer and a great skilled person in that way. She's also a great communicator. So I know that people at Southwest, or, sorry, not Southwest, I saw you, yeah, at SOI are very pleased to have her at SOI. So we have Ms. Tisher as well, who's made a transition. Another new assistant over at SOI, and we're going to do this for 25 times, okay, is Ms. Amy Harrison. Amy helped develop Southwest, I did it again, SOI, in the virtual program. She's really begun to develop that and grow the program. It's one of her claims to fame, but now she's elevated to the AP position. So we're looking forward to the work that she's able to continue to do with virtual program and to step in and fill some, some large shoes there at SOI as well. Now, we will move to Southwest. We have Ms. Audrey Lindley, who you've been introduced to. We also have Ms. Karen Johnson. Ms. Karen Johnson comes to us from Rogers, and she's done an excellent job there, and we're looking forward to the work that she has to do in front of her, especially in response to intervention. She is quality, has great quality and great skill in curriculum and development. Is there anything else that you would like to say to the board in regard to your skill set?
I'm just excited to be here. It's been an amazing couple of weeks, and I cannot believe this is going to be good.
Tidbit about her, she lives in the district, and she has two children that go to Tyson Elementary School, so.
She's PTSD, yeah, in my book.
Well, see, that's something new I didn't know. All right. Well, we're really glad to have you. Okay. We have a, really a popular person in our district who's been here before and has now come back at Westwood. We have Ms. Martha Tompkins. Ms. Tompkins started off as assistant principal over at George Elementary several years ago, had a short stint over in Rogers as the director of ESL, and we communicated with her and asked her to come back, and so she's done that, and she's an assistant principal at Westwood, along with our new principal, Ms. Janet Harris. So we're excited to have both of them. Of course, you heard from Janet earlier today. Did I miss anyone? We have Jason, what, Jason and Kevin. We recognized Jason and Kevin both last, last time, so, at Springdale High, and you heard from Kevin, or you heard from Jason today. Kevin is a Springdale Bulldog. He's come home, and so we're happy to have him. I about hit him the other night. He didn't even know it. Was driving around down toward, out in the west, and he was walking his dog with his wife, and my wife... and my wife and I were busting through there in the Jeep and there he was. So, I didn't, did I tell you that? Okay, I thought I did. Anyway, we have a great group of educators. And as you know, we expect to have some fun because this really, really hard work, if you can't have fun while doing it and be able to count on the person next to you and the one next to you and the one next to you, it's just not gonna get done. The beauty about Springdale is the work is hard. We don't give much thanks, none of you do. But at the end of the day, we get to go home and be happy and excited about the work that we got to do that day, no matter how hard it was. And that's attributed to you all as a board and to Dr. Rollins and all these leaders that are in here, every one of them. So, thank you for that opportunity to, to introduce those administrators. The last thing I'd like to talk to you about is an update on our personnel. Dr. Rollins told you we hired about 150 people. I believe that is accurate. Get my notes just to make sure. I think it's 153. He told me this morning, stop. No, no more. So, we think we can. We believe that we're pretty close to, to rounding out our overall need for staff. There may be a few more students trickle in that creates an opportunity for us to have some split classes. We really don't want to balance transfer kids from one school to the other if we can help it. So, moving a teacher might be better than moving a busload of children. So, that work may be coming. We have 53 replacement classified new hires. There are two new positions to the classified so far. We believe that's going to be it. We've got a part-time social worker in Ms. Sarah Jones, who's also a part-time coordinator of school health helper with Mary Miller. She's going to be paid for through grant funds with Parson Hills. She's gonna run that Parson Hills clinic. We also have an assistant nurse supervisor that's going to begin to help stem the overflow of work that happens across the district with Nurse Laundre. Nurse Laundre talked to you about the work that she does and so, there's some additional coordination of, of work that's taking place there. We have 158 new personnel to the district. Many of those 158 are part-time, so they're not full-time FTEs. Dr. Rollins, I think, may have mentioned that to you earlier in the day. Overall, I did some rough calculations. We have 3.5 new administrative staff at the district level. Those are Joe Rollins, Danny Brackett, Bobby Cole and Shawna Lyons. When I say 3.5, I mean FTEs. That's full-time equivalent, okay? Full-time equivalent. We had the eight district teachers on special assignment that were paid for at Race the Top Grant Funds. Dr. Rollins and you all have approved to keep those eight, enroll them from NSL funds and now they're called instructional, like, we have an instructional, technology coordinator and, and other things like that. But they're really specialists in their field. So, we have eight of those. We have eight new special education positions. Those are required due to IEPs and student numbers. If we had fewer IEPs and student numbers, we would have fewer numbers of sped teachers. So, we have eight new ones. Two of those will be at School of Innovation. The Harbor Language Academy, we've talked about Language Academy and how ESL program has changed somewhat and we're trying to help push along our ELLs in a more rapid manner. Okay? So, taking the year twos and threes of our ELL teachers in that Language Academy and having those kids redistributed across the secondary levels has created additional need for staff members at Harbor. I don't have the exact numbers, but there are seven staff members that were in the Language Academy that were here last year as teachers at Harbor that are still here, but the funding that we paid for them out of has now changed. Okay? So, without getting too far in the weeds, they were paid through ELL dollars. Now, they'll be paid out of teacher fund dollars, district, okay? All right. A great and wonderful thing to talk about is our East program. We've had 15 East stations in the past. We're adding four new ones. I've talked to you about this before. They're at Smith, Jones, NAP, what's the last one? Walker. Okay? So, we have those four. They'll be paid from categorical dollars as well in our NSL funds. So, there are four new staff members there. Ms. Tisher, previously, and Martfeldt and Joe Rollins. In trying to build the staff at SOI this year to have about 1,200 staff members, we needed additional teachers to, to teach those 600 new kids, okay? We've gone from about 600 kids to roughly 1,200 students. Right now, we have right at 26 full-time equivalents addition, okay? So, those are some new to the district, some are from current schools in our district that have requested to be transferred over. So, we have those new staff members. At the end of the day, when you take the addition of any of our students in our traditional schools that, you know, excluding SOI, we have 10.93 new FTEs outside of sped, outside of the ALE transition into regular ed from Harbor. We're talking about new staff members, okay? Tyson Elementary has one. Tyson Middle School has one and a half. Archer has a new teacher. They had a waiting list, having a new teacher provides them opportunity to have 15 more children. So, it, it cash flows in a, in a great way. We have two new staff members at Monitor. Lakeside needed an ELD, so we have a .43. I know it's details, but it's important that, that you know. Linda Childress Nap is a growing elementary. They needed two additional staff members. We've got one, we've got two at halftime at Hellstone for the advanced, one at Shaw and then one social studies teacher at SHS. That actually is my report. That's a whole lot. I'll be happy to submit that to you in writing if you would like that. But overall, you have it by email. We've added some staff, but they've been needed staff. Do you have any questions? It's kind of a, it sounds like a hornet's nest or a tough ball of wax to put back together. Have you ever been fishing with an open-faced reel and you cast it and it does that? We, we have that occasionally, but we really try to manage it in a structured and smart way. So, I hope you don't ever worry about it because Dr. Rollins and I, and Kelly Hayes certainly worries enough for all of us. So, unless you, you have additional questions, I will, I'll retire away. Dr. Rollins, is that okay with you?
Thank you, Doc.
Miss President's, okay?
You forward it, I mean Cynthia's in us.
Yes, yes. So, if you have any questions about any of that, I'll be happy to answer. 56.5?
Yeah. Three and a half, eight, eight, 21, 26, four.
Should be these calculations. We absorbed four positions. Okay.
Well, we cleared the room out. See y'all.
Okay. You have a great night. Thank you. Thanks, Administrator.
We're giving away money.
We're giving away money.
Okay. They were the best.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you.
No, they're just...
It's all the daddy, daddy, why not get to keep his job? No.
They did awesome.
Thank you.
It'll be a while.
I think almost one of them are adopted.
I'll tell you what, it's been an amazing start of school for me and thank you for the afternoon and your input into our work in, in trying to design buildings as we go forward. But there are some projects that you may or may not get to see on a regular basis. I wanted you to get to see some of the work that our support service team has done. And before we get into pictures, I need to make sure that I say this. They are truly 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whatever it takes to make sure that school happens the next day. And they, they've had the chance to prove that even as late as Sunday evening, coming into the start of school on Monday. So, to each of them, number one, thank you for bringing me along with them every day and thank you, thank them for what they do. If you get the opportunity, please pass on our congratulations, our thanks to them because they make school happen for us. But some projects that you may or may not have seen. How many of you have seen the culinary kitchen at Springdale High School? For years, that was a tiled room that had built-in cabinetry. It was time for a facelift. Our teams came in, they reworked the floor, they reworked the cabinetry. You can see the new stainless countertops there to make that truly a commercial kitchen environment. That's the work of our people. Just another look down the other wall. Quite a bit of change from where we had been before. You can see several, several land control, water mitigation, control measures in place. Lot of side projects that happened. That's alongside the tennis court by Springdale High and I can count several of those around the district. But that takes a lot of manpower, a lot of, lot of arms and bent backs to make sure that each of those squares get into place. But new lawns going in around the district, trying to control water, trying to make sure that these are beautiful campuses for our kids. At Walker, it was time for some updated water plumbing sewage pipeline. We've made that work even as late as Sunday, making sure that everything was ready for our kids on Monday. All buttoned up, covered up, brand-new system, ready to go. Central, some of our custodians expressed a desire and a knack and a strong ability to, to do some paintwork. If you had a chance to see some of the floors, some of the rooms in our schools, we bragged on it about a month ago, they were in some of the best shape that I've seen them in to date. They also wanted to step out and improve some of the walls. This is a, a room that is now gonna become a robotics and engineering room over at Central Junior High. Now, for those of you that, oh, access granted. This is actually supposed to be a video. For those of us who don't get to drive through the pickup line at Central every day, I wanted to make sure that you had that experience. And if you haven't had it, this, this was a drive-through, roll-through, just so you could see what Ms. Cook gets to see every day when she rolls through. Quite an improvement, quite a process.
Did you do that video?
No. Everybody needed to go with me. It's so, it's just, they did such a phenomenal job.
As you look at how that's gonna combine with the construction coming in off of Huntsville, getting traffic out of the, out of the flow, big project, great improvement to the flow of that campus. Safety improvement for our kids.
Was the first time I've ever seen parents actually get out of their car to thank Officer Byer, to thank the principal, Dr. Lofton, and just, they were trying to figure out which way to get. I mean, and they said, "We don't care. This is awesome. We'll do whatever you tell us to." And it was just the look on all of their faces was, I mean, it was, it was definitely...
Well, it, it really creates a new look to that campus as you roll through, for sure. We talked a little bit about this in the meeting this afternoon. We won't, we won't spend too much time here, but continued planning for Phase Two of the School of Innovation. We've seen where we are with that. We've talked about the, the changes, the improvements we'd like to make coming forward to Central and Southwest Junior Highs. We've talked about the need and we'll continue to study the new elementary for 2021. There are also warm, safe and dry requirements. How can we go through, improve roof structures, heating and air conditioning structures, hot water to certain buildings? There are a number of those projects that are in the pipeline coming toward us. It's one of those scenarios where the projects have been approved for us to pursue. We'll wait to see where our funding stands in the spring and that'll allow us to try and decide how to go forward from there. So, other projects that are gonna continue throughout the fall, we're gonna continue our work on the playable fields at Springdale and Harbor High School. You're gonna see pavilions added to both of those schools. Pre-K continuing to work there to make that the best environment we can for our kids. If you've not driven past Washington School, you need to go take a look. It's, it's received a bit of a facelift and some continued inside work. The projects are gonna continue to come and I wanted to throw some numbers at you just quickly, over the summer, in addition to the work orders that our teams work on every day. And just to put a number to that, in the last seven days since teachers came back, our crews have responded to 540 work orders. Now, add to that 316 larger-scale projects over the course of the summer. That's the scope of the work that our teams are doing. So, everything from our craftsmen and women, carpentry, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, transportation, warehouse, diesel, diesel technicians, and I'm gonna leave some out, so I don't wanna rattle all of them up, but true skilled craftsmen and women who are working to make sure that school happens for our kids. We're two days deep. We're already a number of work orders in on those two days. If you get a chance to see our team members, please make sure that you pass along your appreciation for what they do. We talked briefly in our meeting and we won't elaborate too deeply onto this. What does the future of that school funding conversation look like? We had a chance to touch on it. We think over the course of the conversation with our legislature, this is kinda what it'll look like. Again, continuing the language of warm, safe and dry, space and growth. We've talked about that median income for the district and how that will have a, a variable in how the future of school funding works. We think that we're gonna see about a 1% change in our level of funding. We can make that work. We'll continue to study that as it becomes more and more formalized going forward. Again, please make sure that as you see our support service, men, women, please let them know how appreciated they are. It's been a whirlwind of an experience for me since July 1 and I can only imagine what tomorrow brings, but I'm loving it. Gives us the chance to really make school happen on all fronts and I'm appreciative of the opportunity there. I do have something else to visit with you about tonight and it's an opportunity that I hope we can put into consideration. In the spring, we had the opportunity through a Detroit Diesel grant to pick up five additional buses at approximately half price. One of the other participating districts had to pull back out of the program. That opened the opportunity for us to acquire five additional buses at that same rate. It's an opportunity that hasn't come along very often. Gives us the opportunity to buy a bus literally at half price and it will offset the cost that we would have to spend in the future. So, we would take a bus that would approximately cost about 91,000 retail, pay about 58,000 for it. And it gives us the chance to pick up five emissions-efficient, energy-efficient buses. The drawback is it would require us to decommission five of our least energy-efficient buses in the process and pick those new buses up again at half price. I would certainly request that we put that into consideration if you'll allow.
I was curious, do we need to approve that on buses?
Normally, we just deal with those when those options come along. We just wanna make sure you are aware of it. If you're comfortable with it, a motion would be good. I don't think it's necessary unless you want to...
I'm not sure exactly what kinda motion to make. I guess as one board member speaking, I mean, if you have opportunities to make good purchases on school buses as you need them in the operation of the district, I, I would certainly support that, so...
Thank you.
But, but just...
Me, too.
Yes, sir. We'll do that. I appreciate the opportunity very much.
Joe, I believe for purposes of that grant, would you...
We have a motion.
Okay, well, I will, in that case, then, I will make the motion that we proceed forward with the consideration of purchasing five buses at an approximate cost of 58,000 each when that opportunity arises.
And in that case, I will second.
Motion by Mr. Blutcher will second on Mr. Dodson to proceed with the bus purchase grant. Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you, Doc. Ms. Trey?
Good evening, Board. This evening, I have several items for you. The first one being the financial update for our building projects. As you noted on the, in your board agenda, all three projects are virtually complete. We're just holding a little retainage money, so I anticipate paying those out whenever they, we feel like everything's good, up to our standards. So, those projects are virtually complete. The next item that I have for you, Board, I believe is, and I didn't bring my agenda up here, is Act 1599 disclosures. We have two companies that I'm bringing forward to you this evening. They are both companies that are owned by school employees. The first one is Bro's Cajun, Bro's Cajun Kitchen, that's it. I couldn't remember the last part. Bro's Cajun Kitchen. It's owned by Joey and Nicole Bro, who are both employees of the district. And we have explained to Mr. and Mrs. Bro that the only conditions that we could really I don't anticipate either of these going over the required threshold to have to present to the state of, the State Board of Education. We will be monitoring that just in case, but that has to be over $10,000, and I find that highly doubtful that that would happen. But we do, we are required to disclose these relationships in an open board meeting, and the board is required to take action on these resolutions. So, any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolutions as presented.
Second.
That's Act 1599.
Yes.
What a motion by Mr. Huxton, a second, on Mrs. Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The final item that I have for you this evening are the June financials, I mean, I'm sorry, July financials. Because we are in the process of completing the budget for the 18-19 school year, it's kind of hard to get the budget all ready to go until you've got everybody hired, and we're still working on that. So the numbers that have been listed here for the budget amounts are actually last year's numbers, but next month, when I present the board, the budget to you for the 18-19 school year, we'll have those updated for you. A couple of things that I did want to point out to you, on the revenue page at the bottom, well, first of all, let's talk about the top section. If you look at comparatively speaking, how much we've received this year versus last year, we're at almost 6% versus a little over 1% last year. And that is because the state foundation funding amount of $8.8 million. Last year, we got that amount at the 1st of August. This year, we got it at the last of July. So it's just a timing thing. So next month, it'll, it'll work its way back out. At the bottom of the page, you can see I have some brackets around numbers, and you're thinking, "How do you have a minus revenue?" Well, in part of our closeout process, we have to book as revenue any revenues that, any amounts that are going to be coming in that are for the prior year. And the state of Arkansas likes for us to, in the first period of the new year, reverse those journal entries, so, and then post the incoming revenue as an actual revenue when it comes in. So until the revenues actually come in, it looks a little funny. Does that explanation make sense to everyone? Okay. So that, that's what's happened in those cases. On the expenditure report, there's the same explanation at the bottom of the page there. We had some, for example, the Central Junior High project, we were obligated for that, but we had not paid it all yet, so we went ahead and booked all the expense in prior year, reversed the journal entry, and as we make the payments, that'll zero it back out. So it's just timing, and it, and it looks a little odd, but it won't be there for very long. So, other than that, it's early in the year, so we've got a whole year to go, but it's going to be great. Any questions on the July financials?
I do.
Do you want to make permission that we accept the July financials as presented?
Second.
There were a motion by Mrs. Cook, and a second, Mr. Emerson, to accept the July financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Ms. Trey?
Good evening, Board. This evening, I have several items for you. The first one being the financial update for our building projects. As you noted on the, in your board agenda, all three projects are virtually complete. We're just holding a little retainage money, so I anticipate paying those out whenever they, we feel like everything's good, up to our standards. So those projects are virtually complete. The next item that I have for you, Board, I believe, is, and I didn't bring my agenda up here, is Act 1599 disclosures. We have two companies that I'm bringing forward to you this evening. They are both companies that are owned by school employees. The first one is Bro's Cajun, Bro's Cajun Kitchen, that's it. I couldn't remember the last part. Bro's Cajun Kitchen. It's owned by Joey and Nicole Bro, who are both employees of the district. And we have explained to Mr. and Mrs. Bro that the only conditions that we could really do any business with them is if we take bids, and they are the low bid. In that case, then we could work with them. The second one is a company called Freshy, and it is owned by, oh, gosh, Shelby somebody.
Shelley Harden.
Shelley Harden. Shelley Harden. I didn't bring my notes. It is owned by Shelley Harden. She is also an employee of the district. She and her husband own this. It's a restaurant, and so once again, it'd be the same situation. We would have to take more than one bid as per policy, and they would have to be the low bid in order for us to do business with them. I don't anticipate either of these going over the required threshold to have to present to the state of, the State Board of Education. We will be monitoring that just in case, but that has to be over $10,000, and I find that highly doubtful that that would happen. But we do, we are required to disclose these relationships in an open board meeting, and the board is required to take action on these resolutions. So, any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolutions as presented.
Second.
That's Act 1599.
Yes.
What a motion by Mr. Huxton, a second, on Mrs. Cook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The final item that I have for you this evening are the June financials, I mean, I'm sorry, July financials. Because we are in the process of completing the budget for the 18-19 school year, it's kind of hard to get the budget all ready to go until you've got everybody hired, and we're still working on that. So the numbers that have been listed here for the budget amounts are actually last year's numbers, but next month, when I present the board, the budget to you for the 18-19 school year, we'll have those updated for you. A couple of things that I did want to point out to you, on the revenue page at the bottom, well, first of all, let's talk about the top section. If you look at comparatively speaking, how much we've received this year versus last year, we're at almost 6% versus a little over 1% last year. And that is because the state foundation funding amount of $8.8 million. Last year, we got that amount at the 1st of August. This year, we got it at the last of July. So it's just a timing thing. So next month, it'll, it'll work its way back out. At the bottom of the page, you can see I have some brackets around numbers, and you're thinking, "How do you have a minus revenue?" Well, in part of our closeout process, we have to book as revenue any revenues that, any amounts that are going to be coming in that are for the prior year. And the state of Arkansas likes for us to, in the first period of the new year, reverse those journal entries, so, and then post the incoming revenue as an actual revenue when it comes in. So until the revenues actually come in, it looks a little funny. Does that explanation make sense to everyone? Okay. So that, that's what's happened in those cases. On the expenditure report, there's the same explanation at the bottom of the page there. We had some, for example, the Central Junior High project, we were obligated for that, but we had not paid it all yet, so we went ahead and booked all the expense in prior year, reversed the journal entry, and as we make the payments, that'll zero it back out. So it's just timing, and it, and it looks a little odd, but it won't be there for very long. So, other than that, it's early in the year, so we've got a whole year to go, but it's going to be great. Any questions on the July financials?
I do. Do you want to make permission that we accept the July financials as presented?
Second.
There were a motion by Mrs. Cook, and a second, Mr. Emerson, to accept the July financials. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Ms. Trey?
Good evening, Board. This evening, I have several items for you. The first one being the financial update for our building projects. As you noted on the, in your board agenda, all three projects are virtually complete. We're just holding a little retainage money, so I anticipate paying those out whenever they, we feel like everything's good, up to our standards. So those projects are virtually complete. The next item that I have for you, Board, I believe, is, and I didn't bring my agenda up here, is Act 1599 disclosures. We have two companies that I'm bringing forward to you this evening. They are both companies that are owned by school employees. The first one is Bro's Cajun, Bro's Cajun Kitchen, that's it. I couldn't remember the last part. Bro's Cajun Kitchen. It's owned by Joey and Nicole Bro, who are both employees of the district. And we have explained to Mr. and Mrs. Bro that the only conditions that we could really do any business with them is if we take bids, and they are the low bid.